Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the presentations this month at OTPS.
Kind of guaranteed us the performance.
If it doesn't, I promise you, this is my retirement. And then just go off to prison and then sure.
Pretty much better this time. We did, I'm sorry, real quick, just to comment on this. We went and spoke with the high school leadership kids that put on the stain week. And of course they raised a little over $10,000 asking them to come and talk to you guys and kind of showcase to them what they did this week. It was just phenomenal, the amount of work that they put into it and how well they win. The amount of money they raised to make a wish. It was really good. Talked to them today. They'll try to be here in April to present to you guys and get some information.
A is recognizing care from visitors, quality participation, if you have any sign. I would see financial report.
I got it presented. Okay. Alright, so Brady and me, I just wanted to give just a little bit of information. One thing that we've done starting this year is the department budgets. As you guys can see, we've got maintenance, made the special part of the elementary, custodial grounds, athletics, technology. We have budget for child nutrition, for all of our libraries, each of our building sites, van, some other things. But our biggest one, kind of our operations is right here and you can notice the first of this line right here, this column. So this is what we've expended to date this year. So our maintenance is up. We've kind of taken on some projects and I'll show you that kind of after this. And a little bit, I can show you some things that we've been doing around the district, just some little projects. But those little projects, I've had it pretty quick compared to where we were set at last year, same time, right? So we're up to 28,000. Transportation, same time last year, we're at 125,000. This year we're at 150,000 in cost of fuel going back some of this. Jeff's done a good job of trying to keep those costs down, but this is kind of where we are. Custodial's done a really good job of match, of just shopping around. Everything he buys, boy, did a great job of that. And then grounds is about the same. Athletics, he spent all of his money upfront as opposed to kind of spreading it out through the year. And then technology has spent, they're still under budget. They've done a good job. They're holding off for some summer projects though. And then of course, a lot of the stuff that's running, that's getting done right now is through E-rate, so it won't cost us anything. So it's kind of where we are with that. A little visual right here. I told Brady, I wasn't telling everybody that that 50% of the left was just her salary. But to be honest, I don't really know what it was. Maybe it was just thrown in there. So you kind of see the, kind of where our money's spent on the right side. Child nutrition, I think it's pretty exciting. Look at these numbers up here. So the revenue to date, expenditures to date this year, right? So we've made 506, we spent 365 or 363. So we're ahead by about 143,000. I'm going to subtract out of that about 40 to 50,000 because we haven't paid the bill for, whatever got the bill in for January. So this is the end of January. But still, we're ahead about $100,000 from when this time last year, we were in negative $11,000. So the amount of money that we've spent, the amount of revenue we've taken is pretty drastically different from the positive. So just another credit to those ladies that have been working, keeping an eye on those budgets. You can see the difference right here. It's a positive difference, I agree with you, it's still a big negative difference. So moving, moving in the right directions in all of those areas. Of course, our biggest money that we spend is still in personnel, which I was talking to Joe earlier about that. This is the time here where we do a lot of work with that. So we're still working on making sure they get the kind of biggest bang for our buck out of all the pressure. Make sure we get the right spots and get things done. So that's it.
A is the assistant superintendent.
So I gave you those two documents and I wanted to thank you guys. And I want to talk a little bit about the professional development that we have planned for our new math curriculum. And also kind of update you as far as where we are with choosing that curriculum, which I am very happy to be able to tell you that we did choose. It did go the way that we kind of expected to. The elementary schools wanted to choose from one publisher. The secondary sites wanted a different publisher, which is completely fine. They offered two pretty different things. But we were, did have good consensus among the teachers in those two areas. So for the most part, elementary unanimously chose Big Ideas, which was one of the approved state approved curriculums. And unanimously, secondary chose McGraw-Hill. So you can kind of look through and I showed you on this sheet what each grade level is getting with their choice. We are very happy to have been able to provide everything that the teachers wanted. And there's some extra digital things that they wanted, which we were able to afford in the budget that we set. And our elementary teachers need some new manipulatives, which that is the things that they use for hands-on math, the little items that they use. We are in the process of inventorying everything that we currently have to make sure that if the two sites can share things, if one's got extra something, the other doesn't have it. Because you can purchase those things cheaper if you buy them yourself than buying them through the publisher. So we're kind of working on that, just buying those like kind of à la carte ourselves. But the teachers need, they've made a list. Miss Marcy and Miss Bell have been working on making sure that whatever the teachers need, they get put onto a list. And then we're inventorying what we have, what we like. So able to get them to that. You'll see some of the younger guys did not want the digital platforms and feel that they would use it, which is really understandable with younger ones. They wanted more of the hands-on items. And as they get older, they didn't want printed books. They wanted to be able to have an online access and they can print anything. The book is online and any of it can be printed. So they can go on and for students that prefer to work on paper, they can get it that way. And they also have some additional curriculum that they already have that they want to incorporate as well into that with McGraw-Hill. And we also, so the professional development piece is we're working on getting those trainings set up. We heard from both groups of teachers that they wanted to get started on that now and didn't want to wait until right before school started. So almost all of these dates are locked in. We're still waiting to hear from McGraw-Hill on one of the dates. But you can see the Big Ideas, which is the yellow one, which is elementary. We get a few more trainings than we do at McGraw-Hill. And we get so many in-person and so many virtual. So everyone, every elementary math teacher will be getting in-person training on the new curriculum on the 26th of April. That's our next distance learning day. So they'll be able to have that and each site will be able to have their own time. So the lower will have a time of in-person and the upper will have a time of in-person. And then there are three virtual trainings. And you can see there's one, there will be one in July, one in August, and one in September. If, and teachers just have to choose one. And they can do all three if they want to, they can do one. We're just asking them to choose one. If they do either of the summer trainings, we will give them a stipend for attending those trainings. They're virtual. If they do the training in September, which is on the teacher collaboration day, obviously they will get a stipend because that's a workday for them. But they can pick whatever fits into their schedule. That is virtual. And Big Ideas did say that they would be willing to offer on that day even different time slots. So if a morning time slot works better for the teacher, they can hop on and hopefully there would be an afternoon time slot. If that works better, they can hop on and do that training. And our fifth training is for the administrators to learn how to look at the reports, how to run the reports, how to get access to the data, all of that. So that's the elementary teachers are getting. And then if you look at the second page, secondary teachers are also getting an in-person training. That's tentatively scheduled for the 26th, which is next month on distance learning day. That's the one date we don't have locked in yet, hoping that that works out. So that is, as of now, tentatively, that's the date. And then they will have a virtual training in September as well, as well as an administrator training. McGraw-Hill does not provide as much training upfront as Big Ideas does. But we've already visited with Dr. Wilkins and talked to principals, trying to figure out exactly how much training will their teachers want. So if we need to add some, we will. Kind of give them the opportunity to get that first initial training, get to learn the program. And then if they need some more, we'll add some more. Costs isn't too big of a cost, but it's not exorbitant for that extra training for them. And that could be either virtual or in-person. So that's where we're at with math. Any questions?
When they go from, let's say, they go from fifth grade to sixth grade, they go from McGraw-Hill to Big Ideas to McGraw-Hill. Is that going to cause any hiccups with the learning, the kids learning this versus this?
So that's going to be the biggest vertical alignment project we're going to have. Is those sixth grade teachers and fifth grade teachers. And we've already spoken about that, getting together to figure out how to crosswalk those two, common vocabulary, common teaching strategies. And they don't seem, they both view both of these curriculums. They didn't seem to feel like it would be that big of a project, but definitely they will have to spend some time doing that for sure. Making sure that that's a more seamless transition between the two. Okay, and the other thing I wanted to share, and I'll talk about it a little bit, Miss Bell can jump in and correct where I mess up. Is we are doing a new approach to pre-K here at ninth this year. And the pre-K team had this, what I think is a fantastic idea. They're calling it Little Mustangs Kick Off. And you've kind of got a copy of all the documents that parents are going to get when they come. And this is going to be Tuesday, the 26th, a come and go event, 4:30 to 6:30. And they will be set up in stations in the lower elementary gym. So there'll be stations for enrollment help if they can help get in that. Because the first time you do it, if you're a parent here, you know it's a little confusing. And some of these families will have never done that before. So we have people there to help them make sure that they can get logged in to their parent portal. They know what they're doing. People there from the special education department, there's that sort of a need. All different sorts of stations set up that the parents can go through to get information. There'll be a place that they can find out exactly what documents they need, have their immunizations checked currently. Our nurses will be there to look over their records, let them know what they would need going into the next school year. The caring day will be here the week after that, so they can get their immunizations if they needed. And they also will be getting this second sheet of paper, which is called, is it time for pre-K? And the teachers will be going over with parents to kind of help them understand exactly what their child is going to need to be able to do before they come to pre-K. And there's a list of self-help skills, the biomotor skills, and social skills. The pre-K team says they get this question from parents all the time, especially in the summer leading up to pre-K. What should we be working on? What can I do to make sure that pre-K goes well? So they kind of picked their most important right off the bat, so it'd be great if they could change the skills and they listed them. And one thing for sure that they want to make sure that parents understand is that they need to be fully potty trained before they come to pre-K. That that needs to be happening. And they are going to try something different going into this next year, which is instead of taking a nap, because they're noticing a lot of their pre-K students do not nap anymore. They'll be doing a little bit of a brain break with a plan for students who need that nap. If it's something that they, when I'm in pre-K, I still need a nap, there will be an option for that. But it wouldn't be a requirement for every child to take one, and it is right now. So hopefully that will give kids who are past the napping stage or who just have never been nappers, the opportunity to do something different during that time. So parents will get this. And then they will also get their pre-K supply list, so they can start looking for so many of them. Again, this is their first entrance into our school, so they want that supply list. They want to know the differences. They'll get this. And they will also get a tour of the lower elementary. So there'll be volunteers, some student volunteers, some adult volunteers to give them a tour of the lower. And I think the plan is to have the pre-K aides available to show parents how the car line works. Just trying to get them an idea of what that looks like now, so that they can think about it over the summer. They can prepare their child and hopefully that entrance into pre-K would just be as easy as it could possibly be. So pre-K team has worked super hard on this, put a lot of thought into how can we make it as easy for the kids and for the parents. It's also nervous time for them, bringing their kid to pre-K for the first time. So I'm really proud of them. If I'm pronouncing it correctly, okay, that's it. Any questions about pre-K, Little Mustangs Kick Off? And then they, they'll be doing some other activities at the start of the year or two to help with kids and parents as well. But this is just trying to get ahead a little bit. Thank you.
E is the Title IX compliance report.
We're compliant with Title IX.
Yeah, superintendent's reporting.
So a few different things. If you look on the screen, so a couple ago, there are operations. We have some little projects going on around campus. We have had, just trying to make things a little bit better. Baseball concession, the power to the baseball concession then was pretty bad. You know, the triple breakers and that, the breaker box just stayed hot all the time that things were going on. So back, whenever we ran the concrete outside the football concession stand, ran a conduit out so that we could kind of run new electricity over to the baseball concession site. So they've been working on that. They've gotten up to this part right here. Still waiting, I think, that's what Brady, they're waiting on, I don't know, some parts to come in to get that finished out. And they have this, the trench part is filled back in, they have gravel on it. Once it's all completed totally, they'll concrete back over that, make that look a little bit better. But just kind of make, kind of brings that all up to a better situation at the baseball. Which is good, which is good. They've been doing a good job. So we, we got a little bit of safety and security money. Some of our exterior doors were pretty bad shape. They wouldn't close well. You have to slam them closed and it's still some kind of, it wouldn't stay closed. The sun, you know, after 50 years, they get a little bit of work. So we've got some new doors going in, some shelter by the choir room, one just over by the child nutrition office. They're really nice, solid. We will paint those, that same color as the rest of the doors. They just haven't been painted yet, have those going on. And then in the athletic building over on the west side, those doors with the same thing. So we've got those replaced. And we have two more sets of doors, I can't remember where, at the upper elementary. I think, is that right? Yeah, when they're going in, we don't have those done yet. And we're doing a new, so the fence that goes into the bus farm, that's the gate that opens, we're moving that out to, so that way the, that first maintenance building, the grounds building will be enclosed in that gated area. So I don't have, I don't think I have a picture of that. No. So that's being, that should be done over, I think they're going to start working over spring break. So basically, the sliding gate's pretty old, we're getting a new top gate. They have readers in each of the buses, so if a bus pulls up, it'll automatically open. So if groups come in late at night, they don't have to get out, push in the code. As they pull up, they'll automatically open. We'll have some of those in our Suburbans and also have an app that, if I remember right, Jeff can, I can sign the number to somebody that, you know. So if you guys take a Suburban somewhere and they come back, you can hit that button and it'll open up. You don't have to get out of your car. So getting kind of an updated fence gating system, you know, with the bus farm. And again, that's, because we've had some stolen out of there in the past. Fiber optic project, we approved this last month, the E-rate stuff. They've started all that, they'll start boring under some of our, I'd say haven't already started boring under some of our parking lots. And here and there, connecting all the buildings, so that's going on. And over on the, by the upper elementary, they gated that off because they weren't able to close that. So the fence, they gated that off. Just a little project, trying to make things a little safer, more secure, kind of with controlled traffic. So that's been good. Brady and his crew's been working hard doing that and then just all the thousand other little things that they've got going on. Our maintenance internship, we're pretty excited about this. So we have a couple of different things going on, our tech internship, which is going on. I think it started this year, right? And which has been really great. Those guys are working hard and doing a good job. We want to kind of expand that to kind of a general maintenance internship, which will have form, just, you know, variety of duty. Have some safety training with them, you can see that. Have some safety training and then just some general kind of introduction to air conditioning units. And some introduction to some other things that will be done in a safe manner, but they can learn kind of how some things work and kind of how things work behind the scenes to just kind of get those kids interested and kind of get some things going. Hopefully then we're going to hire some of those guys down to be some good people. So excited about that, excited about continuing to see how we can expand that and how we can continue just to provide more opportunities for our kids, right? So it's about helping kids find their path and trying to do that. Last, I wanted to say, so the transition from the, to the second grade of the upper elementary, we met, we walked around, went through all the classroom buildings, talked about all the stuff that we're going to need to do at each place. Brady's getting, he's ordered out of the 400, 600 boxes, something like that. We'll distribute those out to the teachers this week, so they can kind of start packing up their rooms. Some of them have packed up and started that project already. I wanted to say, so at the upper elementary, some of the classrooms over there, if you guys will remember, they're separated by those accordion walls. The teachers weren't really excited about that. But Mrs. Coler's family, so Trance Coler and Kyle Coler, both work for construction groups. Are getting the supplies and the work donated to take out those old accordion doors and to build in just some solid frame walls with some doorways in between. So really appreciate them getting that done across to the school. They'll get it done, do the work over summer after everybody's already doing their stuff. So they won't be in the way, they'll do all the cleanup and everything's redesigned. It's a good little project and it helps us. It's something that we, as we were walking through, we talked about maybe next summer we could get to. But then being able to knock that out now, it's a big help and the teachers will really like it over the next time. And that, that transition, those conversations continue, trying to come up with the best plans and the best way to do it. Our ladies have done a lot of work trying to figure out where everybody's going to go, make sure it's all as smooth as it can be. Our maintenance operation guys have done a lot of work planning, work at, planning on coming to happen.
Here's the consent agenda. These items may be approved by one court motion, otherwise any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. A is a discussion consideration for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 12, 2024. B, discussion consideration for approval for the following warrants and coveresses. General fund encumbrances, 319 through 346. General fund warrants, 2081 through 2470. Building fund encumbrances, 78 through 85. Building fund warrants, 373 through 451. Building bond funds encumbrances, 2024, 38 through 197. 2024, 38, 198. And 2024, 38, 199. Discussion consideration for approval of financial reports. General fund, building fund, bond funds, activity funds. Discussion in consideration for approval of the following activity fund transfer, which is 47 through 342. Discussion in consideration for the approval of the following outstater overnight field trip request, which is the oil mess ban, Branson, Missouri, May 2nd, 2024. So your team in motion regarding the consent agenda. If anyone wants to have a separate vote on any of the items, please let it be done at this point.
If we approve the consent agenda, items A for the, and so.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item four, administrative. A is recommendation consideration in action on approving the following activity sub-accounts. Number 910, upper elementary library, and number 913, middle school library.
So these are sub-accounts that we have active already. It's just changing them to fit the need we have now. With the split of the upper elementary and the middle school libraries, we go into next year, have two libraries. Gives us cause to have a, an activity account for each one.
You're entertaining motion then regarding the following activity sub-accounts in the upper elementary and the middle school library.
I'm making motion to approve the following activity sub-accounts. Number 910, upper elementary library, and number 913, middle school library.
Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please.
Yes.
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 Item B, recommendation consideration in action on approving the following OTPS Board of Education policy update. First is the GKF Disciplinary Action for Misuse of School Bath Rooms and Changing Facilities. Second one is the HPPDA, parent participation in the school district.
So both of these are policies that we have in place. The first one, if you'll notice, the bottom has the underlying areas. This is the law that changed it. So the law came into effect, I think, two years ago and got out this policy. And then it changed last year, since talks about males being in female's restroom and vice versa. But they changed the law, because obviously we have the coaches that have to go into locker rooms during ballgames. And so the law changed, we just hadn't updated our policy. I noticed that this past week, that we hadn't added that bottom part onto our policies. This is just adding that in. And it gives the regulations for how that works at halftime. And then parent participation, this just updates a little bit to go along with the law stating. Adds some different reasons, number seven has the why. law stating, adds some different reasons under number seven as to why my parents can opt out of, some general language about that. That's just, it follows along with what's in law.
All right. Entertaining motion regarding the two different items here for Education Policy Update. We approve the Education, OTPS Board of Education Policy Updates, GKF Disciplinary Action for Misuse of School Bathrooms and Changing Facilities, and EHBDVA, parent participation in the school district. Motion is reserved. Any discussion?
Okay, so both of these are part of our, our policy already. Policy added on.
Yes, sir.
There are policies already have, it's updating the figure. Is there any way to notify parents of this, if they've already, say, downloaded and trained in our policy with our handbook? This is going in handbook?
So it goes in our policy manual.
So that's not accessible to you?
We keep a copy on front, that if anybody wants to come in and review, obviously we can.
Okay, but it's not part of our handbook?
Like student handbook?
Any more discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item C, recommendation consideration in action on approving the contract with Sylllogist and for student information system and various components.
So I'll speak to C and D because they're both kind of the same. I'll speak to C and D. So Sylllogist is who we use for our student information system and our accounting software, software program that we pay for each month. It used to be M.A.S., I recall, but they've changed that to Sylllogist. We have two different contracts, one for the student information side and then the second one for the accounting software side. So this first contract is for the student information side.
Entertaining motion. Sylllogist app, student information system.
Where would we have to see?
Sir?
Any discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item D, recommendation consideration in action on approving the contract with Sylllogist app for accounting software and various components.
So again, this is the counterpart to it on the accounting side, this is what we use in our office, payroll, treasury, et cetera.
I make a motion to approve the contracts with Sylllogist app for accounting software and various components.
Second. Any discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item D, recommendation consideration in action on approving the disclosure and reduced price information agreement between OTPS and the Cherokee Nation. Can you look at this?
Yes, so even if you heard the Cherokee Nation is taking over the summer food program that the state has offered for families who qualify for free reduced lunches. So there's been some confusion in the state about how schools can get those students signed up for that program. Schools received an email on very, very little notice, like that the state, that the Cherokee Nation wanted student information. Two days after the email was received, a check they sent. Then they came back and said, no, don't do that. The state's gonna sign a contract with us, so schools don't have to do it. They came back and said, no, we do need schools to sign an MOU, so we'll just share basic information from students who are free reduced so that the Cherokee Nation can reach out to them and offer them the card that they'll get to provide food over the summer. So this is just allowing us to share that student information with the Cherokee Nation so that those, any free reduced child, they don't have to have their card, they can meet any student that is on free reduced lunch right now, will be able to get that summer eating card over the summer.
So I made it up to be Cherokee, is it?
Not pre-Cherokee, any of our free reduced students. So it's amazing that the Cherokee Nation is doing that. It's about those students can get that money for over the summer. So this just allows us to give parent contact information.
And the information we're sharing is under the, it's confidence information that we can make sure.
Entertaining motion regarding the consideration in action, approving the disclosure of reduced price information agreement between OTPS and Cherokee Nation.
I make a motion to approve the disclosure of reduced price information agreement between OTPS and Cherokee Nation.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item five, this personnel, proposed executive session to discuss resignations, hiring personnel, extra duty assignments. Resignations that are to be discussed would be Mary McQuaid, Christopher Greer, Logan Merrill, Sarah Butterworth, Austin Upke, Leah Seal, Matt Sweeney, basketball duties, Jeremy Foster, Leader of Abstinence, Randy Allen, hiring middle school library day, a middle school math teacher, and rehiring for the 2024, 2025 school year, Scott Dobbs, Tanner Miller, Deloitte Tagg, Coover Shears, Caleb Hotfeldt, and Jeff Swiker. Entertaining motion regarding going into executive session at this moment, we enter to executive session. Second. Vote please.
Yes.
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 Board has now returned to Wilkins session. Only in executive session, all board members were present along with Dr. Wilkins. Mine is Craig Kellogg, yes. So he's absent and we've discussed the resignations of Mary Paquette, Krista Greer, Lily Merril, Sarah Butterworth, Austin Upke, Lyle Seelock, Matt Sweeney, Master Will Davis, Jeremy Foster, Leave of Absence Brady Albert, hiring middle school library aide, middle school math teacher, hiring for the 24-25 school year, Scott Dos, Tanner Miller, Dwight Tackett, Colby Shears, Caleb Potfeld, Jeff Sawyer. Those were the only items discussed in executive session. So at this time then, I indeed, we spoke to her, accept or not accept the submitted resignations as listed below, and those are Mary Paquette, fifth grade teacher, effective end of the 23-24 school year, Crystal Greer, elementary DTE teacher, effective end of 2023-24 school year, Lily Merril, middle school body law coach, effective May 1st, 2024, Austin Upke, middle school assistant principal, effective June 12th, 2024, Elia Seibach, high school teacher and coach, effective end of 2023-24 school year, Matt Sweeney, head girl of basketball coaching duties, effective end of 2023-24 school year. And we entertain a motion then regarding item D.
Move to accept the resignations as stated.
Take.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Item E is a motion to accept the resignation agreement with Sarah Butterworth and accept Sarah Butterworth's resignation. Entertain a motion.
My motion to approve the resignation agreement with Sarah Butterworth and accept Sarah Butterworth's resignation.
Sir?
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Item F is a motion to vote to approve a leave of absence for Brady Albert for the 2024-2025 school year.
Move to approve item F, Leave of Absence for Brady Albert for the 2024-25 school year.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Item G, motion to vote to rehire the following for the 2024-2025 school year, Scott Dos, high school assistant principal, Tanner Miller, well, the assistant principal, Dwight Tackett, Director of Custodial Services, Colby Shears, maintenance, Caleb Potfeld, maintenance, Jeff Sawyer, grounds. Entertain a motion to go ahead and hire those individuals.
Move to rehire the individuals listed in item G.
Sir?
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item H is a motion to vote to employ or not employ the recommended applicants for the following positions, the middle school library aide for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year, and the middle school math teacher on a temporary contract for the 2024-2025 school year. Dr. Wilkins?
Our recommendation would be for the middle school library aide would be Jennifer Adams, for the middle school math teacher would be Samantha Decker.
Move that we approve the applicant, Jennifer Adams for middle school library aide for the remainder of 23-24 school year, and Samantha Decker as the middle school math teacher on a temporary contract for the 24-25 school year.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 I think this is an excellent.
Yeah, I wanted to introduce her, if you don't mind. Sam Decker, Samantha Decker, we're excited to have her as a sixth grade math teacher. She's got over, what, 14 years of business.
Next year will be my seventeenth, seventeenth year. So she's currently at St. Pius, but she and her family have lived here for over seven years. We have Colt, who's a sixth grader in our building, Jess is a third grader, right, at the upper, and so we're really excited to have her as our new teacher, Mrs. Lawrie's retiring, so we're excited that she's part of our little family. And then I have Jennifer Adams, who, Jennifer Adams is probably one of the first people I ever met when we moved to Ulugot because I think our kids were playing football and we, you know, came in as, what, fifth graders and they were out on the field and we were out on the field, so she and Kevin were the first, one of the first couples we ever met. Been great friends of ours, but we're very excited to offer her the middle school library aide position. She's going to be under chair, right, and excited to have her. She's been in, what, you lived here 21 years, 22?
Yeah.
Thanks, you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome and welcome.
Thank you.
School Board recognition. Mr. Robert Powell is yours for service.
I think it was Charles, oh, sorry. I think it was Charles, I'm going to say a few words in there. Can you just kind of talk about it?
Yeah, just, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm not going to say too much, but before I got on the board, my, my opinion of teachers and education was already sky high, and after having been on the board for 10 years, it has just skyrocketed even higher. I mean, the, what I see the teachers and the admin and just the support staff and everybody do in this district year after year after year is just absolutely amazing. I mean, you guys, you guys are just phenomenal. It has been an absolute honor. I mean, that sounds, you know, cliche, but it has been an honor to serve Ulugot District and the community in this capacity, and like I said, my, my respect for teachers and education and everybody that comes with it is extremely high. My daughter is a junior in college, finished up her junior year in elementary education, so I mean, it's, it's a very high priority and, and like I said, it's, it's been an honor. It's been an honor serving on this board, these gentlemen here, Brad, who's missing, and then the ones in the past as well. It's just been an honor to serve this capacity, and I just wanted to thank Ulugot community for allowing me to serve. I greatly appreciate it. It's been, been a good experience, so thank you.
Well, speaking with someone who's been with you during this period of time, I appreciate very much your service and what you have given to the community and the way you have worked within the school district, and wish you the very best as you go forward.
Appreciate that. So when you leave the board, do you get a lifetime pass to the hospitality rooms? If you need to eat, come eat, it's fine.
I would already do that.
It's on rhythm though. Yeah, yeah. It's really only good.
You get a few looks, but those are fine.
I appreciate you already, you've done very well. It's like, I think you're right. You've done very well, it's a pleasure, and I appreciate your forthcoming honesty, and I know you guys have been through a lot over the past several years, and I think, you know, just the fortitude that you guys have shown in trying to make Ullagod continue and to make Ullagod a greater school has been phenomenal, so I will miss you on the board, but excited that you're getting to have a couple of evenings free now, so it's good. Thank you.
Okay. Item six is, it's seven, new business?
Do have new business. I have two letters of resignation that came in, they're dated March 11th, they're dated today. They both came in, Mr. Simkop and Pygantol. I would recommend that we approve those under the new business.
Okay. Have here the resignation from Cheryl Simkop and Kristen Pygantol. We entertain the motion regarding these resignations under new business.
Move to accept the two resignations that Dr. Wilkins presented. Second.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
We have adjourned. Did we have, Dr. Wilkins, we talked during the policy, the proceed here policy? We did. You just go put that all the way across the afternoon next month, okay?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Vote please.
Yes.
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 We adjourn.